Yeah.
I read it thoroughly.
That one down there must be on.
Okay, so is there a, is there a button on this thing?
Right, this one. Yeah, there that.
Now, do you think it's on?
Yeah.
In your towel? Uh, yep, didn't see the picture, but you can see it in there. Oh, there you go.
All right.
Good girl, good girl.
See, all they had to do was get me out of there and it was all set.
Where was I? Does anybody need an agenda?
He's already handed them all. If you don't mind, I wrote it down so I could see if I could find it.
If we have an executive session, then I'd have to remember to turn that off.
Yeah. I know. Yeah, bomb the thing.
You'll hear all the vote by morning. That, that's, that's good stuff. That's not a bad, that's not a bad thing.
Go ahead, I haven't read it in detail yet.
It does. No surprises there, that's, that's okay. Leave it with me, I'll take it with me and sign it, that's no problem.
Okay, just look like it.
Yeah.
Back from the coffee, you're still in trouble with the problem.
Please leave.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there any public participation? Hearing none. Consider approval of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting minutes as written or with corrections as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, Captain, as per the difference, no exceptions. Second.
All favor? Um, administrative reports? Uh, principal?
Well, number one, I was going to be happy to report that roof systems of Maine will be here tomorrow. Um, however, I was just on the dap- on the phone with Ray. And due to the weather temperatures and that type of stuff, um, he doesn't feel that it's safe for his crew. Uh, but then we'll have a safety meeting and be here Monday. Sometimes it'll be a couple hours now. Finally, the drain has been repaired, that is between the cafeteria and the gym. Nico, um, fixed that, so that gives us five more bathrooms to use. So now when there is a vent in the cafeteria, uh, we don't have to leave the gym open for people to travel in there to bathroom. Um, who was it, mechanic, yes, no, not mechanic, yeah, mechanical services, they've been down and replaced, replaced the, um, backflow valve to the boiler and put a check, check valve on that. So that's two things that have been fixed, two big things that have been fixed. For general repairs, um, of course, David has been working well for us, doing our cleaning and that type of stuff. And Steve has picked up on some of the general maintenance, such as toilets, you know, leaky toilets, um, getting the lights back on a timer. He was working on that today and I said, we'll have fun with it, because in six weeks, I think the time's gonna change.
Yeah.
Um, and it was a matter of finding where were the timers? And there are two timers, the lights are on two different systems. And then there are some lights that run by a photocell, so those had to be replaced, had nothing to do with the timer. Um, stops, you know, boards he's replaced, so that's been a great help, he's doing a wonderful job. Um, at some point, so we have snow day makeup and winter roof repairs. So we need to figure out what we're going to do.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've missed three days due to weather and three days due to facility or maintenance. So we had with the water twice and the roof once, and three days just due to weather. So that's, those are, those are two separate things. Like, I can request a specific waiver from the commissioner for, you know, the water repair and the roof day. And we haven't got to five yet to use the extended day option for weather. So I would say, let's, let's wait until like the winter season is over and decide like in March or something. Would be my recommendation.
Well, I'd like Tina to explain to the board the process of doing that and what it does to the school calendar for June.
Okay. So, the school calendar right now appears that without storm days, the last student day is the twelfth of June. Right? But we need to add, right now without waivers, six days. So if we add that six days, that's a holiday, that brings us, I believe, to June twenty-first. One, two, three, four, five, six, right, okay, so that throws another holiday in there, June tenth, which would be an extra holiday that staff would be paid for, correct? Okay?
Well, staff run a contract, so the, the support staff would be a little more, the support staff would be paid for it, teachers run a contract anyway.
Okay, so that brings the last student day to June twenty-first, right now, if we don't miss anymore. Um, and the last teacher day to the twenty-second, which is way, way late. The waiver has me totally confused, because as I read through it with Johnson, it talks about that a waiver may be granted only after we've exhausted everything.
Yep.
So that makes it sound like we've gotta try to do everything we can to make them up before we ask for a waiver. And then it goes on, and you can straighten me out, um, where did it go, I have it highlighted here, that talks about, hmm, that it may be granted only after we've done all of that. And then it, if an emergency closure is not weather related, which we're talking about water, da, 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 and applies to only some food, we can ask for a waiver.
What?
Okay, so, but then you don't ask for a waiver until you've exhausted every, that's where I'm getting tangled up.
Yeah, well, if you read, if you read this stuff, it, it's enough to make a grown man or woman cry, doesn't it?
Serve one tear, serve one tear.
Past, past practice, after you use five snow days, you can, you can, you can, I can write a letter, the board chair has to sign, and it will say something like, "On whatever date of a board meeting, the board voted to implement the extended day option to make up up to five snow days," which is the maximum allowed by law. So what would that do for you? If we miss two more days due to weather, and we get to the magic five, I'm gonna ask the board, please vote for the extended day option. We would extend the day for one hour a day for four days a week, potentially, uh, to make up one day. So conceivably, when I've seen it, the quickest you can do it, if you extended the day by an hour, Monday through Thursday, nobody wants to stay an extra hour on Friday. If you extended the, the, the school day by one hour, Monday through Thursday, and then did that for a month, that would get you to your five days. Based on past practice, particularly in Eastport, it's a long week for the kids. So what, what has worked, I think, well, for example, in Eastport, is to say extended days on Tuesday, Thursday, and you just have to go a little bit longer, maybe you go for like seven or eight weeks, you'd have to stop somewhere. Or extended days on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or something, to meet the minimum required by law. So if you went from like two forty-five to three forty-five, say, three days a week, but you would have to extend them for twenty days to make up the five. So that's, that, that's the nuts and bolts of it. It sounds more complex than it is, I think we did it one year before here, but it was quite commonly done in, in Eastport, so I've been through it a few times.
So you're saying that if we had no more snow days this year, then we would not have to do anything?
We have to make them up, if you couldn't use the extended day option. So if we stay at three, let's say we-
Then we make them up in June?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I would still try and get a waiver for the non-weather-related emergency days.
Okay.
What if we was, what if we used our five days, and we took a bump in somewhere between February and April, and we missed another five days? When you say five is the max?
Yeah.
So, I mean, these are the type of things that I think we're trying to prepare for ahead of time, is so that the students and the staff is not going to school until the end of June.
Right, the, the law says hundred and seventy-five student days, that's, that, that's the law, one seventy-five. Um, if it, if it, if it got to be that bad, if it, if we endured the mother of all blizzards in like March or something, um, you, you could use your five days for the extended day, you could potentially go Saturday. Uh, you'd be looking at the definition of a school day, if you're curious, it's not as much as you think. Pretty much, I think it's three hours instructional time. Um, so you could go like a half day on a Saturday, uh, to make up one of those days. And going on Saturdays is never popular. I did have one school did it, a period, my first couple of years down as superintendent, they had a longstanding policy that if they missed a snow day, they automatically went the next Saturday. They did that for many years.
You always did.
Uh, so, but the, the answer, Dicky, there are some other options that we can do if, in a dire scenario, where we wouldn't be going till June twenty-first, that's outrageous.
Right.
Uh, so, we could do the extended day option, we could go on a Saturday, after that, we're pretty much tacking them on at the end. Uh, but let's, let's hope we don't use-
I mean, back when, like your answer, back when my students were walking longer, I don't go with that.
Fifty years, to be exact.
But still, even when I went to school, if we had to go to school on a Saturday, we were there, because there was no other, no other option for us to, but go to school. So I mean, but I'm hearing rumors that we have a high problem of meeting the threshold of making sure that we have enough students to-
Yeah, I think, I think the worst number of makeup days I've seen in my tenure as superintendent was seven. So a school did five, extended, used the extended day option to make up five, tacked on two at the end, and they would have this. Uh, but there are some options, but, uh, we don't necessarily need to act on it tonight, I think we'll be better informed same month from now.
Can I ask Tina one thing? You have your, uh, like these activities for the kids, are these already included on this calendar, our school calendar, like these days by, like the cops, cooks, yours?
Yeah, that's like an hour and a half activity during the school day.
Okay, so it's not, it's not on that calendar there?
The regular school calendar? No, no. So I'd like to speak a little bit about snow days?
Go ahead.
So I have been through several options, blizzard bags, so on and so forth, and that with remote. Um, in here, it does say that you, instead of, um, I use the option to extend five school days by one hour, because the most you can extend is one hour, and it takes five of those days to make up a day. Um, may one or more of those be a planned early release. So we have several ear- early release at eleven, and then early release on Wednesdays. Um, thinking about teaching and learning, certainly as we get into June, that month is, yeah, they show a lot physically, staff and students, but not mentally, myself included. If we could look at, and I put together a calendar extending those days by one hour, so instead of getting out at one o'clock on Wednesdays, you would get out at two. And instead of getting out at eleven on early release, you would get out at twelve. I think you're gonna gain more teaching and learning than you are if you keep kids from two thirty to three thirty. Um, so I did pull together a calendar, had, had we started making days up yesterday, you know me, I've got it all out here. Um, I can see the potential of making up one, two, three, four days if we extend on those days, minus the one hour that we missed yesterday, and staff has already, we've already talked about this. And also, if we take the workshop day in March, which is Friday the seventeenth, and make that a regular student day, um, staff has agreed to come to school till a half a day to make a whole day on a Saturday. That would take care of five days. I'm, I'm hesitant to wait, because we're gonna, if, if this is the option we choose, because we're gonna run out of those extended, those days to be able to extend.
Can you give us a copy of that and let us look at it?
I can, I think I sent it in an, I sent it an email.
So not, not to be argumentative, but I would just add this. If you wanted to change a workshop day, like a spring workshop day, like we typically carry a workshop day in March, just to break it up, March is the wrong month. Boards many times changed the workshop day to a student day to accommodate a snow makeup. That doesn't require a waiver of any type, that's a, that's a vote from all of you saying we're gonna change the calendar in the March, whatever workshop day is now, is now a student day to make up a snow day, so you can do that. Um, extending your, your regularly scheduled early release days, like you're out early on Wednesday, um, that isn't going to make up a snow day, because you're al- you're already counting that as a day, because you already meet the minimum number of hours to call that a day, so you won't gain anything doing that.
We're counting an early release day always a day, puts the difference in the two.
Because it's the difference between a teacher day and a student day. Like a workshop day, when teachers aren't here, that's not even, that's not counted as a student day. But work, the early release days for your staff, if your kids are here until eleven-thirty, that's a day anyway. Extending the day to two-thirty isn't going to make up a snow day, because you, it already counts as one, because you meet the minimum number of hours in the morning. So if you want to change your professional development calendar, you're looking at a full workshop day. So instead of having the teachers for a full workshop day, you have to make it a student day, and that's how you make up a day.
So then, and not to be argumentative, if it says, if I use the option to extend five school days, well, that's not the one I'm looking, yes. Yes, if I use the option to extend the five school days by one hour,
Yeah.
may one or more of the days be a planned, and the one o'clock days are planned, and the eleven o'clock days are planned,
Yeah.
the early release day. The answer is yes, provided that in any two-week period, the average school day is at five hours before the extended hours are added. Our average school day is six and one-fifth hours.
Right, so what you're telling me is that if Wednesday, if Wednesday is a regular early release day,
Right, it's a planned, it's a planned early release day.
Right, well, you, you, you could count that, that's only after this board voted to use the early release option, and you gotta get to five to use the early release option.
But it says, a waiver may be granted only after school officials, this is why I'm confused, a waiver may be granted only after school officials have exhausted all reasonable avenues for making up lost instructional days.
Yeah, so what, what the law is saying in, in rec, because it's a separate law, it talks about the extended day option, that was a standalone law, that's bad. So you'd have to get to five first, in order to use the extended day option. And the reason that other phraseology is in there is because extend the day by an hour. It does not say the end of day is whatever, doesn't say a specific time. So if the kids go home at twelve, because, you know, it's a scheduled early release day on Wednesday, and the teachers stay till one, if you extend that by an hour, that can count, sure, but you gotta get to five first.
Can we look at the two calendars, two options?
Right, but we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait a month, and we're gonna lose, there's an early release day.
So how many have we used?
We've used six, that have not been waived.
Three, three weather-related and three, three facility-related.
Three?
I'm thinking the facilities can be waived.
Well, I don't see why we'd wanna waive those, those days, the education days were, are you mad with us?
It, it has been, it has been my experience, and the commissioner has been generous in granting waivers for non-weather-related. If, if I say, look, you know, with the roof blew off, and it was a safety thing, and my board wanted to make sure, you know, that the building was appropriate to have kids come in, she's gonna grant that, I've got, I've got faith. Uh, but as far, as far as the weather goes, you gotta get to five.
So she will grant the, the two water and the one roof, the days that do not need to be made up?
Right, the wa- the waiver would, I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic she will give us a waiver, I probably shouldn't stick my neck out and speak for the commissioner, but I'm optimistic she'll give us a waiver for those three days.
Deputy likes it.
Yeah, the deputy doesn't like me, he didn't let me into a virtual meeting anyway, I'm still grumpy about that. Uh, so, um, the other three, right now, you know, you're looking at either changing a workshop day, which doesn't require a waiver of any type, and then theoretically, you can go two at the end, uh, but I think we're gonna have-
So we do what you've said you're doing, we do what Tina-
Well, I'm not the superintendent, but I'm, I'm, I'm-
Well, I'm wondering.
And I don't wanna be, God love you.
I'm wondering.
Let's, now let's throw all the options out there.
So there's extended day, Saturday,
Extended day, Saturday, tack them on at the end.
Shorten your vacation.
Or.
Or.
I don't think you can shorten the vacation, but that's probably contractual with the teachers.
Well, it's in here, we schedule a shortened scheduled vacation.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it's in there, but unless you wanna do battle with the teachers' union, I'd steer away from that one.
Or, as other schools are doing, and I put a question mark by this, um, we have to be reimbursed for food in order for it to start count as a full day. Which costs more, bringing staff in for an additional day, or losing reimbursement for one day's worth of food?
So, so, in, in order to be reimbursed for food, and you're reading the law correctly, you do have to be, in order to be reimbursed for food, for it to count as a reimbursable meal, you have to serve it on-site. So sending blizzard bags home no longer is acceptable, and the reason for that is because the federal government, the waivers that were in place during the COVID years have all timed out, they've expired. So now we're back to the good old days where, you know, David Hartley and the lunch police would tell you that in order to have a subsidia- a subsidizable meal, it's gotta have all the components, gotta be served on-site, and okay. So Tina is reading the law correctly, you gotta be, you gotta have a reimbursable meal to count it a day. But the take-home blizzard bags are no longer considered reimbursable meals, so you gotta serve it on-site, so you might as well, you might as well have it. And I'm su- and I'm sure it is going on in other places, but I'm telling you the law as I understand it.
Right, so, you can still do it, you just don't, you can still send home a blizzard bag, you just don't get reimbursed for the meal, correct?
Right, you wouldn't get reimbursed for that meal, and if you don't get reimbursed for the meal, I don't believe you can count it as a makeup day, or count it as a school day.
An S A U cannot refer to conundrums, the meals cannot be reimbursed, and all associated meal costs become the responsibility of the S A U. Doesn't say it doesn't-
Is that only happening in this state?
I don't know about that, but the, the program that we participate in is the N S L P, National School Lunch Program. And that, those guidelines are federal and would apply to all the states.
Cause I mean, I know, like, before, I can back up here a little bit, I spent time down in New Hampshire, and leading that everywhere down.
So it doesn't say that the day doesn't count, it just says that the meal is not reimbursed for. So if we looked at the difference between sending, sending home a blizzard bag and not getting reimbursed for the meal, or having staff come in and running a buses, which?
Well, obviously, it's more expensive to have staff come in, because the meals, if you broke down the per-meal cost, it's higher than you think, because of the nutritional standards you have to serve. But I'm, I'm sure it's more expensive to have staff come in for a day.
Well, is this something that we can look into to find out, in case we go your route and say that we're gonna wing this last two days of storm closures that we possibly have remaining? If we could possibly use a blizzard bag day, because we legally can, or whatnot, compared to going until the end of June and hoping that we get a waiver and-
I, I can find out, I mean, I did the research six months ago, because I had another colleague asking the same question. And my, my own children brought home a can of Spaghettios in a brown paper bag, and I, it was, it was something like, it was chunky soup, I couldn't get that. Uh, and my wife and I just kind of rolled our eyes, but okay, so I can find out, uh, but again, we won't, we won't be going till June twenty-first, I can, I can state that confidently.
Is there any way that we can look at this stuff? You're putting all this stuff out here, you're both giving something different, and can the board look at it first?
Well, you can, I mean, the law, the law is in the public domain, but, you know, and that, that's why, that's also why you have Tina and I to do legwork.
Well, how many months do we have left? We have my paper made.
Yeah.
Like, we might have enough time that the board can look, or give me the stuff and I'll sit there and look at it, Tina.
Which, you want the waiver, the school calendar, or the calendar I looked at?
The calendar that you, that you proposing, which one are you proposing?
Well, these are the extended days that I'm proposing, that we can use to take care of the five things, right?
So, why am I to be extended for these hours and these days, and we get, of course, no days, and then we'll go above five?
Yeah. Good question, Joe, here's my answer, if you only, if you're on four.
We don't finish making up-
You can't use the makeup day option, you're gonna change a workshop day in March to a student day, that'll cut you down to three. Conceivably, you can go a Saturday and tack two on the end, but, you know, that, those, those are your options if you don't make the five threshold.
So the need to extend takes us into June. So we will go along and make them up, we may not need to extend in May and June, if we only have the three makeup days.
So your last day would be six, seven on this calendar, do, doing it, the extended day.
Yes, so if that takes care of five days,
Yeah.
we only need to do four, we would make up the makeup day by doing in June. So it's, it's planned, so we don't make up more than what we missed. Sorry, I have sugar coat across, please sit.
I just don't foresee it, I'd love to think it, I'd love to sleep all night and not have to deal on the roads, but I just don't foresee it from February to middle of April. Think of us, this, this February vacation week.
Well, you know, if we started before Labor Day, you wouldn't have to worry about how late it is.
Absolutely not. If we used early release days, we wouldn't have to worry about how late we went.
Inside joke there, Joe, I know you're new to the board, but we, we arm wrestle over whether or not to start before or after Labor Day.
Yep.
Smart enough not to ask questions. Have you finished with the other four?
Well, I don't know if there's-
Well, that, I-
No, I have not.
See, that one, Tina, I mean, you're carrying it over a long period of time, and that might work better on the kids, but have it right up to June.
So are we just?
I mean, I'd go for that one, where it's, you know, you spread it out there, and if we have more off days, we'll have to work them in.
So if, if we revisit this at the next board meeting, which is March second, we will miss four of the one o'clock dismissal days, that's our professional development.
So it's gonna be almost one day that we would-
That's one day.
It will be one day, because we missed yesterday.
Okay, so that'll be one extra day.
You go in on that yellow piece of paper?
Yeah, I can make copies of this, I was just figuring it out.
I mean, I, I think that works best for the kids, I know Saturday is a rough day for them.
So I guess that's not, it sounds drastic.
So you want me to continue on, or revisit this in March?
Yes, please continue.
Just look, I mean, and, and the other reason I would say it's in your best interest to wait until March, because whatever you could conceivably decide about making up the days would then be something to change if we had a snow day next week.
Okay, can, can we at least do changing the March seventeenth day to a teacher day?
That's fine.
A student day, I mean?
Yeah.
Um, cause I know there's people for medical reasons that have to make plans, and do March eleventh as a teacher workshop day?
Hopefully, the seventeenth.
Well, what's, what's the eleventh regular, a Saturday?
A Saturday, teachers will go on a Saturday and have kids come to seventeen.
Really?
Yeah.
I think I'm lying.
Well, I've, I've got an ex-union president that just manned it in silently in the back there.
I'm an ex-union president too.
It was presented to us in a way.
March seventeenth, the regular school day.
A regular student day, when teachers will go the eleventh, which is a Saturday.
Thank you to all you staff for that.
Okay, where am I? All right, response to intervention, so we have been working hard to get back to where we were before, pre-COVID. We have a half-hour day built into our school day to do response to intervention.
I gotta get a motion and a vote on that handle, Jane.
We do, okay, who?
I'll make that motion. Change March seventeenth to a regular student day.
All favor?
James, Michael, March seventeen, eight. And do we have to say March, another teacher, that has to be in there?
I've, I've got it, I've got it.
Okay, so we have been working, we, we have in our school day a half-hour every day for response to intervention. Um, and with COVID and shortened days and social distance, it kinda went by the wayside. So staff has been working extremely hard, um, and, and I think we're doing a better job, this is the first week, than what we did previously. Before, we looked at star testing, and we only looked at our kids in surf colors who were loved. This time, we have looked at star testing- This time, we have looked at star testing, and everybody, does not matter where you fall, is now working on something. Um, and it's done through games, buddy reading, um, we have some Title I programs, Sword of Success, Great Leaps, Cloud Nine. Uh, I have teachers looking at Reader Theater, which Mrs. Blasky was huge doing that. Um, oh, B Box, which is some computer thing that Anna is extremely proud of, and her students in first grade actually taught some older students, correct? Uh, so it's been good feedback from the students as well as the staff. Um, and so then we'll go back again, we're testing at the February vacation, check and adjust, we call it, um, you know, if their kids have moved from here to there. And then sometimes, um, test scores aren't always accurate, some kids don't test well, so we found that we've put kids thinking they needed help because of where they tested on, but actually, when they got in that group, they were stronger than what they showed on the test, and we moved them. Um, so I, I'm, I'm very proud of staff, they, they've worked hard at it, um, over several hours. And then just some calendar dates, February seventh, Safety Works will be here, um, the fourteenth and sixteenth, we'll be doing Costco Shores. I think they enjoy it more as they actually get out on the trails, and there was more snow, and it made it a little bit more fun, and then we're in the woods. Um, then the Outing Club will be going to Crab Mountain and Canada skiing, particularly choosing that mountain because it teaches a lesson, it's where they have always gone. Lee doesn't do that, Mount Jefferson and Lee doesn't do that, and Herman Mountain doesn't do that, and Herman to Crab is about the same distance. Um, then we have another Costco Shore day when we come back from February vacation, and then the math for me team, um, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Cox, Ms. Grunier, myself, we'll have another meeting with them, this has been ongoing since August we started this professional development, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, school community, volunteers?
Uh, well, I know Dick's got some, aren't you gonna update anything about the school?
Um, I can a little bit, I can touch a little bit more on what Tina was talking about as far as repairs. Um, some of the issues that we noticed before that we couldn't find in this, and it's still ongoing, but a lot of it is mislabeling. And, uh, there's so many breaker panels down there, we actually, somehow, somebody stumbled across finding out uh, that the stage lights in the gym does work. Um, we've found out how to turn them on, but we just don't know why it was an issue or where it came from that we wasn't finding it before, because nothing, nothing's labeled, I mean, this, it goes right straight back from back in the old days where things were just dotted, nobody touched anything unless it was darts, and really, nobody asked questions where they went. But it's to the point when we started running into, to several problems of things not working, you know, it became to the point that we had to stop digging deeper into what's going on, so, um, some of those things being done, the light, there's lights now that's working that, that wasn't working. Um, Tina spoke about the lights, the, the outside lights around the building are starting to come back on, it's just a matter of uh, getting the right time is set for the, for the right time of day according to the exits and the doors that they pertain to, but, uh, that's happening. Um. The backflow in, that caused the big water problem in the boiler room has, has been repaired, that one, that is gone off the list now, so that's, that's something that's taken care of. The, uh, the one in the sprinkler room that's, uh, still, is still leaking, those have been, the paths for that have been ordered. Uh, Eastern's gonna be down to, uh, to do that when the, when the paths come in for that, um.
Well, where are we at with the roof, or Mr. Johnson's gonna update us the past?
Yeah, I can, I don't have a great deal of new information since the last time we met, simply because I've not received definitive words from the insurance company as to whether or not our claim has been approved. It is in the hands of the adjuster, there has been some communication with Roofing Systems of Maine, I spoke, uh, with the, uh, with the, uh, repair manager, I guess, his title is. He was supposed to be there tomorrow, but he's been delayed until Monday, as Tina has already mentioned, but I don't have any new information regarding the roof beyond that, so.
Are you talking the first time or the second, this recent one, nothing has been, I thought we'd already taken care of that, uh, the first time?
After the first time, indeed, they did come down with a new piece of membrane, and they weighted it down with tires. We couldn't stick it down because the, the temperature was just too cold. Uh, the second time, uh, again, there was, uh, there was a roof, there was damage to the roof due to high wind, the inspection team was diverted from Baileyville to Lubec the day after it happened. Uh, originally, I thought they were coming back the next day, which would have been a Friday, but they did not come, and we are still waiting for them to come with a more formalized repair, that's after the second incident.
So, and a little bit more on that. The reason why we didn't have the extent of the damage the second time around as we did the first time in December was we had enough wet, heavy snow on the roof that kept, kept the membrane from coming off. If we hadn't had that snow on there, it, yes, it would have been off, and we'd have been in worse shape than what we was from the first storm. So we sent, we sent pictures, we sent the video to Ray and explained to him that that is actually still intact, it didn't come off like the first piece did. So therefore, with everything that was being, was going on, that's what led to the delay in him not being here the next day. We figured, because of what we were looking at for weather and what we was looking at for wind, that it was to his best interest and ours for them to be able to come down with the crane, the truck with extra tires, and pick everything back up and put them on and add more to the next section going out, and then he would, by doing so, he could be here also to survey that damage plus any other that we're looking to have repaired.
Now, uh, Tina said something that day she called us, and one of it, I mean, I didn't know if it had, you know, if, if it was in our school that first day when Tina called, I mean, what, are, are we looking at anything in case it goes beyond where it is right now?
That particular.
What we're gonna do with our students?
That particular day was, was really tricky that morning, because when I got the call about it also, that the, uh, ceiling tiles was, was collapsing in, on the stage and the cafeteria, by the time I got there, I had no idea what we was gonna run into. But looking at it and then actually seeing what the problem was, and then getting outside and actually seeing what, what we had going on, couldn't really tell. I mean, when you looked at, how you seen it on the video, and there was a video of that one also, there was a big, huge bubble um, of it raised. What was happening was there was a two-foot by two-foot duct in the, in the ceiling, in the cafeteria, on the stage, that was lifting right in and out of the ceiling, just like the pipe that issue was in the old home ec room. So at that point, we, we didn't know what was gonna happen, we didn't know how long the wind was actually gonna hold up and what was happening. And it was to the point that we started to try to get in contact with everybody to see what was going on, and, and my best, in my opinion of it was, was I just soon have anybody in the world be mad at me for making a decision to keep, keep our kids at home on a day nothing happened down there, rather than me making the decision to bring their kids in and the roof blow off the place.
No, well, right now, we're.
So I just felt that that was the best, I felt that that was the best decision to do, and, and we was luckily able to get by with minimal damage compared to what we could have had, and it's hopefully gonna buy us some time, because we've used two strikes on this roof deal this winter. I don't dare to wanna say what would happen if, if we stared another one.
So yes, to answer your question, um, we have looked at and contacted some people for alternative sites. If some of these schools have shut down, places that have bathrooms and kitchens, um, and it would split kids probably K two, three, four, and five, eight, at the three different places.
Okay, uh, and another thing on this, uh, with, you said mechanical services, did they do anything else when they come down? Uh.
They were, they repaired the backflow valve.
Weren't they gonna do some teaching or do something with, uh, Dave, or something, weren't they?
Yes, Dave, they, 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 the Division of Mechanical Services, Main Controls, came down and did do that training. And they've been here and repaired the backflow valve, uh, so they've been here at least twice in, in fairly recently, although that training didn't take place more than a month ago. They were here, what, last week to, to fix that backflow?
I believe it was last week they fixed the backflow valve.
So right now, they're fulfilling their obligations to us.
Yep.
Uh, I had a question too, um, the other night, well, twice we've been to the gym, with open gym, and the first night, the door doesn't lock.
So Frankie Cee came down Sunday, and has ordered parts and that type of stuff, when he took it apart, um, I don't know who's been in there, but things were put together with zip ties and all of that stuff, so he's got things ordered. Um, I don't know when they'll be here, and it should, it was, it should have been left, it just closed, it could have jacked things again so that you could have gone in and out, but I, I don't know if they stayed that way, like I said, in that door slam or other things, but things have been ordered um, for both sets of doors, they both have issues, um, for the bathroom door that's in the boys' bathroom, and for the door in the boiler room.
So, um, and another thing, I don't know if they contacted Tina yet, but Campobello would like to come over and play again like they have in the past. I don't know if the school's contacted us.
So I contacted their school, and their junior high in Peewee, their basketball teams are not through the school, that's through parents. So I have not had any parents from Campobello touch them. Um, and one of the things I shared with the school was we'll have three of our own teams up and running, I believe during the same times, practicing games, so I don't know how available the gym will be, and then do we put our community members, the pickleball, and the people who wanna do volleyball before Campobello? Campobello has their own gym, why, why?
Well, now, what they're wanting to do is team, uh, they wanted to hear from phone maker, they had a lead one time.
But nobody's contacted, they haven't contacted me, no, I didn't know that.
Yeah, but anyway, they're waiting on that, and I wanted to say real quick that I had requested a filing cabinet, and I was down Winston, it's still, no.
It's not there, is it still, it's still in the I A shop?
Yeah, but what I'll do, because I, you know, I think it's important for this board to be able to go to that school and see your warrants, or see whatever you want to see that pertains to us as school board members.
That's on me.
And I've gotten a few things, but I'll, you know, I'll go down and tell it with the board and set that all up. The paperwork part of it, and then we'll have access.
I've forgotten, I've just gotta get that on me, I've just gotta get it moved up out of the I A shop into the cold acupuncturist room, but things have been happening that it kind of.
Yes, I know they have, I know they have, yeah, thank you, Jane.
Okay, anybody else, or anything else?
Um, I don't think so, I, I will have more after, we know what's going on down there next week with that walkthrough that's gonna happen.
Oh, you have something?
No, okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna do the whole business, but, but I can do it right now. I just wanna thank Dicky for what he's doing down there with the kids on roller skating, yeah, I guess he started out with like five, and now he's got like twenty-five and thirty.
And he's got, he's got like a hundred.
They're laughing at him, they are, we did have a mother break her little wrist, I guess, but, oh, yeah, yeah, a hundred already?
Yeah, I think she'll get a run.
They just do that over a hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
And they're doing the limbo, and they're going around doing the limbo, and I just wanna thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, the, the other thing is the cafeteria is put back the way it's supposed to be, the floor is clean, swept before and after, um, so it hasn't caused any extra work, anybody has.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention that, um, I got a letter from Dana Bradley.
You all did?
Yeah.
And, um.
We were going in. He, uh, he wants us to, um, consider, um, heat pumps?
Yeah.
And, and so I did some rooting around on the internet, and I, and I did find a, an article about that Maine has set aside eight million dollars to uh, put heat pumps in schools, and would pass that along to our building committee, and so you guys can, um, if it doesn't cost us anything to get a bid, just to have the information, I, I recommend just for him finding out how much it would cost.
Does anybody have Dana to join the building committee? I think that'd be a good job for him, you know, it's so hot from Milwaukee because of the drought, and he gets to get home for seven.
I'm hoping that this, uh, weather will start cooperating for the evening, uh, what they're supposed to be and whatnot, and then we can actually get hold of them and just one minute together for this.
Um, that's all I had, and, okay, has everyone, just, has everybody? You're good?
Yep, I'm good.
Very good, okay. Take it away, yeah.
So I have a few items to mark for this evening, first, I'd just like to say that Safety Works is going to be visiting school next week just to do a, a walkthrough, kind of an inspection for safety and code-related things. Our colleagues are from the L C O C, they asked if we could find a way for somebody to take a check on the building after the roof was damaged initially, and this board voted to support that idea, so Safety Works will be sending somebody to us next week. If you're curious, now, they're looking for, you know, general safety, code violations, everything, inspect it up to snuff, got your certificates, things of this nature. Uh, so they'll be with us next week. Also, before I get into subsidy, and I have some bad news to break to the board and those present regarding subsidy, I have a list of appointments here, uh, Greg McConnell, girls' junior high basketball, Alan Shepherd, boys' junior high basketball, and Michelle Huntley, Peewee basketball, those basketball appointments, basketball is upon us. Just so the group knows, and those present, that the nepotism policy was revised, and, and the law actually has changed temporarily at the state level to allow for, uh, spouses of board members to serve either as volunteers or in stipended positions. That law will sunset or expire on September thirtieth. So this is probably a change in the way we've done business in the past, and if any concerned community member wants to talk to me about it, they certainly are welcome. Uh, but that, uh, that change in the law has been, has been put in place to encourage, particularly in small places like this, to encourage people to work with our kids.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think it's sound and reasonable and logical, and personally, I hope it continues beyond June thirtieth, that would take another act of the legislature. Having said all that, subsidy, it's a good thing we're all sitting down.
Can I just ask one thing?
Sure.
How old does, uh, I, I'll ask Tina this, how old do you have to be, like, if somebody wanted to have, like, say, open gym or something for the kids, you know?
So, I mean, right now, what are, what are you doing right now, free and, oh, what, greasing?
Well, I, whatever kids come, quite honestly, but how old does that person have to be, the responsible person?
I would say at least eighteen, and I prefer a little bit older, but.
Okay, I'm good.
Uh.
We had some interest from younger than that.
Okay. So subsidy. Your subsidy for next year, one eight two one seven six fifty-five.
One eight two one.
One eight two one seven six.
And fifty-five cents. This represents a decrease of one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. As if that wasn't bad enough, we're still all sitting down.
It's not passed out yet.
The required local, the amount of money you have to raise by law to get the subsidy, the required local for next year has increased one hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars.
No sense?
Eh, no sense, that's a round number. In, with a decline in subsidy and an increase in the required local, that's a double, that's a double hit. And there is a two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seventy-three dollar and sixty-two cent hole projected for next year's budget in comparison to the current year budget. Now, you're not alone, um, everybody's valuation in the district increased, because that, that was, Superintendent's got a heads up from the state on average, six percent, if you're curious, Lubec's valuation increased from a hundred and seventy-seven million. If you're curious, Lubec's valuation increased from a hundred and seventy-seven million to a hundred and eighty-eight. Eleven million. That's what's driving the required local component. Um, if you're wondering how that calculation is made, when the state determines the total cost of education statewide, uh, they apply a mill rate and that did tick, that did tick up because the total cost of education ticked up and it's multiplied by your valuation. So, you're literally multiplying by two larger numbers this year in comparison to last year. Thus, your, thus your required local increased by one oh eight. As for losing subsidy, I put in a phone call to the finance, chief of finance in the Department of Education. Because I had your two seventy-nine, if you're curious, I've got it right here in this stack. And Lubec did not lose kids. So, if you're not losing kids, I, you know, that's a pretty strong driver in the formula. So, I'm like, what happened? Why did we lose subsidy? I understand valuation. I knew it was coming. We are a, we are a town that has pristine waterfront property. I get it. I don't like it, but I get it. So, I asked about subsidy. Half of that you lost to the salary matrix. That, that was my reaction as well, Jane. So, the finance person said, have you had anybody retire lately? Which we have. Hiring anybody, if they come and go, even if it's not a retirement and you hire cheaper, which we have, they don't give you as much money. If you're curious, I had a thirty-four, five, or six-year veteran teacher retire from Charlotte last year. Wanna know what they lost in subsidy? One fifty-four, nine oh one twenty-seven in the little town of Charlotte. Their whole budget. The whole budget, the whole budget in Charlotte's only nine hundred and twenty-something. And they lost a hundred and fifty-four in subsidy. Now, they've lost kids too, sure. Uh, they went from forty-four to thirty-six. They lost eight kids, which, you know, if you had a five hundred student operation, losing eight wouldn't hurt you as much. But when you're always starting out with forty-four, that's a killer. Uh, and yeah, their valuation went up seventeen and a half. They don't have oceanfront. They have lakefront. You know, they've got Penne McQuon Lake and Round Pond and, I don't know if part of Boynton Lake is in Charlotte or not. But my point is, you lost subsidy. I was in Perry last night. They lost seventy-two thousand dollars in subsidy. Their valuation went up thirty-two in Perry, same reason yours did. They have a hundred and four thousand dollar hole that I shared with their board last night. So, these are, these are tough times. If you're curious, I called after your audit. Still isn't ready, but the auditor ran the numbers with me. And he, he is confident that the internal numbers that we have are very close. Now, a professional auditor, you know, the number's gonna wiggle a little bit. But he reassured me that I could share with the group that our internal numbers are pretty close for planning purposes. So, if you're wondering, um, you're still gonna have six hundred thousand dollars. We're showing five ninety-eight internally. So, I'll, I will say for discussion, you have six hundred thousand dollars. That's an unaudited number, but we're pretty close. And I got the green light to talk about it from the auditor for planning purposes. You committed a hundred and fifty for the F Y twenty-three budget right now at this table. Simple subtraction says you have four hundred and fifty max available. But since it's an unaudited number, let's be conservative. Let's say your max number's four hundred to use the next year's budget. You have a two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar hole, just to break even with where you are now. We've got planned increases, contractual increases by teacher salary that are driven by the contract. You're gonna have significant, you're gonna have some type of roof repair, which we haven't decided on exactly. We said we would go with the, you know, patch the seam and give it a try and, and okay. That's gonna cost an amount of money when that happens. I've been asked to, occasionally the idea of buying a bus comes up. If you're curious, Eastport is desperate to try and find a way to transport baseball and softball in springtime. They have a little white van.
Yeah, I get another one.
They said, Kenny, can you get another one? Well, I picked up the phone, see what I could find one for. Sixty thousand dollars for a little white van. Three-quarter sized school bus would be seventy-seven thousand. A big full-size one like what you got, ninety-five thousand. So, in, on your agenda, number three, where it says to consider a discussion on budgeting needs assessment, we've got some serious decisions ahead of us. We're not gonna make them tonight, obviously. But this financial picture, this is the worst financial picture I've brought to you in eight years I've been your superintendent. Losing a hundred and fifteen in subsidy, required value, required, uh, required contribution going up a hundred and eight. These are, these are big numbers. And I'm not going to launch into an exhaustive rant and rave, which I could do, but I will spare you. Uh, how much you tell me to use in your budget is gonna be a key decision. I've said this in Perry this week. I've said this in Charlotte this week. You cannot spend so much of your general fund that you bleed your reserve white. Spending the general fund is like spending your savings account. You can spend it like that, but it's awful hard putting money in. So, I, you've got four hundred thousand conservatively that you can use next year. Can you plug the hole? You can plug the hole, but you would be bleeding yourself white.
We got too much to look at.
Can you repair the roof? If you've only got four hundred thousand available and it's gonna cost you some amount of money to repair the roof, we start thinking about, well, maybe we borrow money to do the roof and build a payment into your budget. So, if you borrow three hundred and fifty to put a brand spanking new roof on, on a ten-year payout at like two and a half percent interest, Stephanie would know better than I, you're looking at a payback of something like thirty-six or seven thousand dollars that you carry in your budget instead of spending down your general fund. I can give you some options as we go forward, but I need to plant the seed in your mind tonight because these are, these are big decisions. So, with that, that's all I have in my report.
So, what does your crystal ball say about looking at the subsidies outside of this year? Looking at a possible one year?
Yep, and this is, I will share another feature of the conversation because I was very burdened when I was in Charlotte. Because those folks bless their hearts, they don't have the kind of money in their general fund that you do. They're, they're hurting big time. And I said to the person from the Department of Education, I said, I was asked in Charlotte what would cause subsidy to pick back up again. And I said to this person, I said, my response to that citizen was, gotta have more kids. And I was, and it, and the person from the Department of Education confirmed that is the best, quickest way to get your subsidy back up is to have more kids walk through the door. There is no easy answer for your valuation. At one eighty-eight, you are the second most valuable town, I guess, in the county, trailing only Baileyville, which has a major taxpayer in, in the Fulton paper mill. Uh, the, the gap between yourselves and Callis, and I frequently use Callis as a comparative. Uh, Callis, much larger economic engine than you, Walmart, new car dealerships, you know, community college. Well, which is tax exempt, but okay. Right on down the line, you don't have any of those things in Lubec. Their valuation, one seventy-two million. Your one eighty-eight. So, in the eyes of the formula, there is sixteen million more dollars worth of wealth, if you will, here in Lubec.
Ninety-nine miles of shore front.
Is that what it is, ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine.
Well, I, I mean, you got, you got salt on both sides.
Deep, deep shore front.
And you're on a peninsula, so, yeah. But that, that's what it is. And you can't get away from that. But in terms of subsidy, you know, you've al- you already run an extremely tight shift. You have combination grades. You have the teaching principal. And you have part-time this and part-time that. We don't pay huge stipends for coaches or anything. I mean, your expenses are, your expenses are minimal. Your staffing expenses are dictated by the contract. The teachers and the sports staff are both unionized. So, there's not a lot of wiggle room you got. If we were doing a budget workshop, and we're gonna do three of them like we always do, at this very moment, sitting in this chair right now, you've got money in your budget for art, music, P E. And none of those positions are occupied. So, you've got some tough decisions to make. It doesn't have to be inject revenue. It could be a combination of things. Can you make cuts? It's up to this board. Can you make cuts and kinda combine it, cut what you can, and then look at injecting more revenue? I think when I look into my crystal ball, it's gonna be some combination. You're gonna have to cut something somewhere. Then look into your crystal ball about how much do you want to commit from the general fund, which can't go bankrupt. Can't bleed yourself white. Let the line here. Could there be a tax increase next year? There could be depending upon how much you wanna use. All of these questions are gonna shake out as we go through the budget process in the next few months. But this is what's in front of you. So, I don't, I don't need to, to beat a dead horse and drag a dead elephant behind it, but that's what's in front of us.
Like I said last month, we need to start spending that, you know, unnecessarily. Start looking at things that we rarely don't need.
Yeah.
Try to, you know, start cutting that.
Well, we, well, we can because whatever, whatever we pull through on the expenditure side in this year's budget will show up in next year's audit. So, the money that we aren't spending to pay art, music, and P E, now, we're paying somebody. We have people who are helping us out part-time with P E. We voted to do that, but that's a far cry from the salary that's in there. So, what we don't spend will be captured in the general fund for next year.
You know what's sad? The children in Washington County deserve just as much as the children in whatever other county that are dealing with swimming pools and J V balls. And we need a roof. And we're on a sad day in Augusta.
Well.
People don't do what they need to do.
A, a citizen in Charlotte and in Perry asked me about fifty-five percent. Because our governor has been, you know, crowing about fifty-five percent, okay? That's fifty-five percent at the macro level. So, in Augusta, at the state level, total cost of education is some number. I don't know what it is, but there's, there's some number. Total cost of education for the state. The governor points at that and says, the state's got fifty-five percent of it. Well, okay. But the total cost keeps rising. The forty-five percent that the locals pay is gonna rise too. And then, the distribution formula or the EPS formula pushes that out mostly to the larger, more populous parts of the state. So, when I've got a citizen in Charlotte that I just told lost a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and that man says, where's the fifty-five percent? I told him. But boy, I felt bad telling him. But that's the truth. And I, there are, it's, it's just, it's just a hard thing. So, that little gem, that's all I have in my report for this evening.
That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, should've called and missed it. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Any old business? New business? Consider a discussion on contracting cleaning service and lawn care.
So, verbally, I approached all staff in a staff meeting, um, and I believe I would need to put this out to bid in-house. Um, but I do have a couple of people that have expressed interest in the mow it, tending the grounds along the dais. And then I've had two companies come down so far to look at doing the floor. Um, so, and I've asked for a couple of quotes. One is to do everything there is from the kindergarten room up as far as the library, all the classrooms, da, 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 da. And then also, what would it cost for them to come in, like, Christmas vacation and April vacation and do a spit hop? Um, and then Andrew came from Maine Janitorial. And one of his things that he advised me, and it makes perfect sense, uh, is that we have some products for stripping floors and waxing floors and so on and so forth, that we buy the product and pay the companies only for their labor. So, I've kind of, kind of reshuffle things. Uh, I don't have any definites, but that's what I've looked at. And I wouldn't have to advertise in-house.
Yeah.
Because it's like the bus drivers weren't there and the cops weren't there and all that.
Right, right, yeah. No, either a memo in the mailbox or tack it on the court board or whatever we use, yeah.
Like you're cleaning and that's going on, doing pretty good right now?
Yes, yes, yes. And the finding, the changing the timers and the fixing the broken step and cleaning underneath the lawn mowers and finding broken grease fittings and all of that stuff is going well. To do that area, to strip all those.